Give me one second until it. Okay, we are good.
I have to call to order the Chagrin Falls Executive School District Board Finance and Budget Committee Meeting for Tuesday, May 11th, and I'm going to turn the meeting over to Mrs. Brudno, who's going to walk us through the agenda. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, so first on the agenda, we have an outgoing member and a new member of our committee, so we wanted to welcome John O'Brien. Thank you so much for taking the place of the senior John O'Brien, who we will miss and truly appreciate all of his input and the time that he's put into this. He was a wonderful addition and you were the name he gave us. So he spoke very highly, of course, and said that you would fill his shoes. So thank you. We appreciate it.
I won't be able to fill his shoes, but I'll try my hardest to help in any way I can. So thank you for the welcome.
We appreciate it.
I think it says a lot when an outgoing member helps replace himself with somebody equally qualified. John, would you mind just sharing a little bit about yourself with the committee? Not everybody knows you. Maybe how you might add value on a board finance and budget committee and also a little bit about your kids?
Yeah, absolutely. Well, first and foremost, I have two daughters, one in ninth grade and one in eighth grade, Emma and Lila, and I'm a very proud father of those two and like to get involved as much as I can with their extra school activities. So I'm very vested, I have a very vested interest in the Chagrin Falls schools and will always have interest in the schools. My background is I'm currently the CEO of a company called tungsten Capital Partners. I have two partners and we buy companies and they're primarily manufacturing companies in the Solon area. My function at the company of our partners is I'm in charge of all finance and sales and marketing. So while I'm not a degreed accountant like my father, he has trained me well and I am the finance chair of our small conglomerate of companies in Solon. And we've owned them since 2003. We bought our first company. Prior to that, I owned a company in Phoenix, Arizona. And prior to that, my father and I owned a company in Columbus, Ohio called Jeffrey Mining Products. And by the end of that acquisition, I was the controller of that group. So I have a pretty good background in accounting, although not school accounting, which I'm learning from both Phil and John Senior. As you can well imagine, I have about 1,000 pages of reading that John Senior gave me, which I'm about 1% through.
Not just for this committee, just general, lifelong learning.
Just for this committee.
Encourage your dad at least watch the beginning of this so he can hear our gratitude to him, not only for his service on this committee, but for the many, many ways that he has added value in the district, including being a levy chair and multiple other things. He's been a wonderful, and we're not letting him totally off the hook. He's allowed to retire, but we are sure to reach out to him from time to time.
He couldn't retire if he wanted to. So he's always involved.
Great. All right, we'll turn it back to Ashley. Mrs. Brudno, you're on mute.
We were joined by Emily, and I don't know who the other phone number is. We received another phone call, but it looks like they dropped off already anyway. So hopefully.
That was probably me. I joined, I called in first because I couldn't get on the computer. So anyway, technical difficulties. I apologize.
All right. Well, you didn't miss much. We called to order and we thanked John O'Brien Senior for all of his service and welcomed the newest member, also John O'Brien. So thank you to both of them. I'm going to move over to my other screen.
While you're doing that, I just want to add one thing. John, at one of our meetings this year, we talked about having terms for our membership so that you would kind of know that you could rotate off if you needed to, but we also understand there's a lot of, it's very involved onboard people and to really understand school finance. So we're asking for our committee members to give us a two or three-year commitment, if at all possible. So I'm not going to put you on the spot, but if you could just email me and Ashley and just let us know, you know, what you think works for you. And of course, that doesn't mean after two years you have to leave, but if you wanted to have an option to revisit your commitments at that time.
You didn't put me on the spot. I'd be happy to join for three years. That's no problem.
Oh, great. That's great. Thank you. So Ashley, if you'll make a note of that.
I am.
But we're enjoying your girls right now. They're so gorgeous.
They are adorable.
So cute.
I always do this. Every single time I put it on the wrong screen. My dual screens go in here and I try to get closer. Do you see it yet? There we go.
While we're waiting, welcome, John. Nice to meet you. I'm Emily.
Hi, Emily. Thanks very much.
Oh, you know what, Ashley, let's just do a quick around the room. We don't have to do details, but if you can just say who you're, John, are there some people you don't know in this group?
There are a couple of people I don't recognize. Yes.
Okay. So I think you know the board members. We'll kind of skip over us. Committee members could say a quick hello and maybe just a quick sentence or two about your background. Let's start with Bob. I think you're on mute, though.
Good evening, Bob Hunt, Superintendent Schools.
Oh, no, I meant Bob Perkins. Sorry, Bob.
All right, I'm off mute.
I'm going to say you need no introduction at this point in time.
All right. Well, I'm Bob Perkins. I do need some introduction. I don't have, I keep a low profile, I suppose, but I've lived in Chagrin since 2001. I got three kids in the schools, in the school district, you know, seventh, fifth, and second grade. And I'm a financial advisor. I've been an independent financial advisor since 2005. And before that, I did, I worked for KeyBank and McDonald and Company before that. Started off sort of doing corporate finance and doing just various banking jobs. And so I've been in, before that, other finance jobs. So I've been in finance pretty much my whole career. And I have a vested interest in the school and I love Chagrin Falls. So here I am. That's great.
I was muted. Emily, would you go next?
Sure. So I'm Emily Hunter Hick, and I actually just realized, Bob, I did work for a financial planner back, way back in the day. And I also worked for Keith. We have a lot in common. But I have a lot of experience in financial matters, but my angle is a little bit more compliance and audit. So I do regulatory compliance and audit for all kinds of lenders. That's my current job. I'm a lawyer. I work at a law firm, but those are the clients I serve at this point. But I did also do internal compliance and audit for Keith. So I do have three kids in the school system. They're all virtual right now. We have a kindergartner, two second graders. And so I also have a very vested interest in the longevity and success of the schools. And I'm as active as I possibly can be in as many things in the community as I possibly can be. And I just, I love, this group is particularly wonderful, but it's a great, I'm so excited that you've joined us because it's a great way, I think, to contribute to the success of the schools in a sort of behind the scenes way when you have this kind of experience. And so, yes, so welcome. I could go on forever talking, but I will stop so other people can.
I think our last community member is Jim Guddy, who's on the phone.
Hi, yeah, thanks. Can you guys hear me? Okay, sorry, I'm outside at the, I mentioned I'm at the sectional softball game that is scheduled last minute, so that's why I'm not on video. But Jim Guddy, I've got a recent grad from Chagrin and three still in the district. I've got a sophomore who I'm here actually watching today, and then I've got an eighth grader and fourth grader. And started my career at Ernst &amp; Young doing finance and reformed myself. So I'm not an accountant anymore. I work in private equity at a firm in Pepper Pike. So obviously a vested interest in the school district and hopefully my background provides an adequate contribution to the committee.
I would say absolutely. So Mrs. Brudno, I'll turn it now over to you. I know we want to get through a lot of information. We're still hoping to wrap this up at 7 o'clock. So turn it over to you.
Okay. All right. So everybody can see my spreadsheet here, right? I believe so.
Yeah.
Okay, so to the veteran members on the committee, this should look familiar. This is the same format that we used last year when we compared November to May. Now I'm comparing the new May to what we did in November, just to kind of show you the difference. So here's the prior year. This is fiscal '20. This is current year. These columns right here, this is the current forecast. This is what we will be looking at, will be presented to the board at the next board meeting, and then will be submitted to ODE. And then this is what was submitted in November. So these columns here show you the variances for each year. And I kind of just highlighted, I don't want to spend a whole lot of time looking at every single line. I don't think that's a very good use of your time. If you want to come in and sit down and go through every line, happy to do that. But right now, I wanted to kind of point out where, just kind of where we're at. We are in a really good place compared to where we thought we would be in November. A lot of factors contributing to that. Number one is that our property taxes came in much higher than I had anticipated, which is fantastic. I think I was a little bit pessimistic about collections due to COVID. Didn't really hit us like we thought it would. Obviously, COVID hit us like, you know, it has hit everyone in the world, but I thought that we would, our collections would go down as a result, and they did not. In addition, our property values for calendar '20, which represent the first collection in '21, so the spring collection that we just collected, that was higher than what I had anticipated as well. So all that results in revenues coming in at more than $600,000 higher than what we had anticipated in November. So that is really good news for us. On the expenditure side, again, not going to go through every single line, but you can see here, I don't know why I didn't highlight this, our expenses are also $600,000 less than what we had anticipated. So what all of that means is we are $1.2 million in the good compared to what we thought we would be in November. So part of that is the taxes. Part of that is on this expense side, we received a lot of federal money that we thought we were going to be spending, general fund money on things like some equipment that we had to purchase and all this supplies and things like that during COVID. We were able to take those expenditures and move them from the general fund over to these federal funds. So it pulls it out of here and reduces our general fund expenditure, which then obviously in turn increases our cash balance. So that's the very, very high level. I'll try to give you a couple of minutes to look at these numbers here and these variances and see if there's anything you want to call out specifically. I kind of just wanted to stay high level to start with and then kind of see where you guys wanted to go with it.
So Ashley, I just want to piggyback a little bit on the cost savings. So when we did the forecast in November, it already included the reductions that the board had discussed and that we were communicating out to our community that, you know, in passing a levy, we were also tightening our belt. But I think what you're pointing out is that in addition to those specifically identified savings that the district personnel have done an amazing job this year, continuing to be very fiscally efficient. And this is more than we got from COVID relief.
Oh, absolutely. Yes.
So just to give some credit for our staff, that they've all been working really, really hard to keep expenses low.
Yes, absolutely. That's definitely a factor specifically in these three lines right here. The federal relief applies to these two lines. And then the difference here in the benefits is I typically, when I forecast, I assume that we're going to pick up a person or two every year taking our benefits. Actually, the opposite happened. We lost, we didn't lose, but we had a couple of people fall off and decide not to take our benefits, which helped, as well as our renewal came in lower than what we had initially anticipated as well. And that is going really well. We switched to the self-insurance, which is a different committee, I realize, but that's going to, in the long run, definitely save the district some money. So hopefully this line will be a little bit more under control as we move forward.
So Ashley, when did the renewal versus self-insurance, what year, did that all happen during this fiscal year? So it's kind of a hybrid of the two?
Yes. So January 1 is when that switch actually took place.
About half a year of the renewal. Okay.
That's part of it. And then we had some people decline benefits as well.
And so I know sometimes I, I'm not trying to sound like we're putting ourselves on the back at the district, but I do think it's worth calling out that a very thoughtful, very intentional move to change our benefit plan in our contracts with our unions, as well as the move to self-insurance. That's something that's been evolving over three to four years of work within the district, and now we're really seeing it pay off with these types of savings.
Yeah, contributing to that as well is a little bit, a small portion of it, but we also received a reprieve on our dental for one month. We didn't pay the premium. And of course, the employees then received that benefit as well. They didn't pay the premium either for that one month. And that was just due to COVID. The, you know, the dental insurance company, people weren't going to the dentist. They weren't, you know, going out. Everybody was staying home. So they had, they had reserves that they shared. So that helped too.
Hey, Ashley, this is Phil Rankin. Got just a quick question for you with the property taxes. So I understand that we had a higher collection ratio than we expected.
Yes.
I just, my question is just relative towards the forecast or the plan. Did we plan to then recover those in later years? Or did we, it was our multi-year plan to miss some of that? I'm just trying to understand, is it a true pickup or is it a flip-flop between years?
Part of it is true pickup based on the values were higher. And then, yeah, part of it is flip-flop. You assume you're going to collect some of your, there's always delinquencies. You assume you're going to collect some of them. I assume that this year, we wouldn't be collecting a whole lot. And it remained pretty constant. If you looked at our settlements from the counties, you wouldn't notice anything different from previous years, which surprised me. You know, it was kind of all over the board. If you talk to treasurers all over the state, we were kind of all over the board in how we were addressing it. Most people were decreasing their expectations to some extent. And we just, we have, you know, a community that we just were not hit as hard financially. I don't, you know, our residents were able to cover their taxes, whereas in some places, they really weren't.
That was a great clarification, Phil. Ashley, did it affect your collection rate assumption going forward? Or was it just this year that you had downgraded the collection?
I had it picking up. You can see the variances here. Most of that is going to be due to, to the differences in the property values. And when I talk about those differences, I don't, I know it's confusing because on one hand, I say 920 makes it so that when property values increase, our taxes don't increase. That's true, except for the inside millage. So the inside millage does go up with those few mills that we do have of the inside millage. Our levies, our voted millage, that doesn't bring in more revenue as our property taxes go up. But new construction does. So as our property values go up, it's combined with inflation and new construction. So all that new construction still brings in additional tax revenue. And that was higher than what I had expected. Does that make sense?
Yeah, that was a good clarification. And if you look at the numbers, you can see that our collections are not escalating at the rate that we expect property values to be escalating in Chagrin. But there is some fractional increase, and you've just explained that really well. So I don't want to put you on the spot, but what collection rates do you have in, apparently we have, John, just for your perspective, we usually have around 97%. Pretty high collection rate.
Yeah, I actually think it's higher. I think it's more like 90, 97 and a half to 98.
Okay.
I would have to pull it.
That's right. I just wanted to see. So you're basically kind of keeping that back to what we have historically achieved. Okay.
Yeah. And we're lucky that way. You know, there are districts where, you know, 95 is a good year. So, and that's a combined rate that includes the delinquencies that we're, that we're collecting. So theoretically, you could have a year where you collect more than 100%.
Right.
Understood.
Any other questions?
Any other specific, yeah, questions?
Do we get a copy of this so that I can read it in my leisure?
Yeah, I can give you a copy of it.
That would be great. Thank you.
Sure.
You could send it around to me as well. That would be great.
Yep. I am still waiting on a couple of numbers from Charlie on the athletics. So the transfer number might change a little bit, but like if you watch the meeting on the night, if you watch the meeting on the 19th, and this number's a little bit different.
It surprises us. He knows he's in trouble. So I'm not worried about that. Do you want to then talk about those green boxes, Ashley, and start talking about cash balance?
Yeah. So this is, I just wanted to show you the comparison. We, in November, were expecting to have a cash balance at the end of the year of 12-1. It's looking more like 13-4. So that's that $1.2 million variance that I pointed out. And again, this is in addition, Catherine already noted this, but this is in addition to all of the stuff that we already committed to doing, that was already pulled out of the November forecast. So, you know, when we're starting to talk levy cycle and keeping our promise on the three-year, I don't see any issue right now with definitely keeping that promise. I think we can stretch to four years at this point, because this year turned out so much better than what we had anticipated. If that trend continues and if the state revenue doesn't completely tank, or if our, you know, something doesn't happen with property taxes and that doesn't, you know, completely tank, then we can definitely stretch this levy to four years, which is really great news for us. And thank you to all of the staff who stayed within their budgets and didn't keep coming at me, asking me for money and asking for increases or anything like that. Everybody pretty much really, really did their part, to the point where, you know, they were looking at vendors and saying, yeah, but this one's $3 cheaper. And so we really appreciate all the efforts of the staff, working together to keep this number here low, which increases this number here.
Absolutely. I just want to echo that. And I think, you know, when this comes to the board, we will definitely repeat that those accolades that are very much deserved because it's, it's one thing to stay within your budget. It's another thing to come in under budget and, you know, shows a lot of care and concern for the district. So that's good news. So we've got a little more money than we thought we were going to have, and we're on track to achieve our promise to the community with regard to at a minimum of three-year levy cycle. And hopefully now we're on track for a four-year. We do have one big project that we've talked about in this committee and that the board is also talking about, which is the transportation garage, which is ready to be, not even renovated. We need a new one. So we don't need to go into all of the issues around that, but the board is certainly has a good understanding of the limitations of the current transportation garage. And so one of the things that we've talked about in this committee are different ways that we could finance that building. And fortunately, it's right in the sweet spot of around a $2 million project. So it's not really something you'd go out for a bond, you know, and talk to the community about supporting a bond. We talked about a financial instrument called a COP, a Certificate of Participation. And that also is not necessarily very attractive due to the fees involved. And those are things that this committee has looked at before. So John, I'll have Ashley share any background with you that you would desire to get up to speed on some of the different financial instruments that we talked about. Where we kind of ended up as a committee is to see if we could find a way to pay for this out of the general fund or out of any PI fund balance, you know, savings that we're able to achieve. So that's what Ashley's put together here. And the good news this year just helps us even more because we're looking at the bus garage around the year 2024. We're starting to do some hiring architects and we'll be engaging with them more formally. But one of the things the board will want to do is set a budget for the project before the architects really get rolling on it. So one of the things we need to know is, you know, what can we afford and how does that then merge with what we need as far as what do we need that building to function as? And then architects will help advise us about the trade-offs between how much we're willing to spend and what has been identified as the need. So I'll turn it back over to you, Mrs. Brudno, to walk us through this piece.
So I just set this up so that we could kind of look at, I set it up similar to before when we were looking at levy scenarios and we kind of looked at the general fund in comparison to the PI fund and moving things and transferring things and then adding millage at that point. Now I'm just calling out the transfer. So it's much more simplified. What I have here is this is the general fund, very simplified. If you looked at the five-year forecast in the spreadsheet that we were looking at a minute ago, these ending balances would coincide with it. This is the revenue that we're estimating. This is the expenditures that we're currently estimating, including the transfers. And then I've added this so that we can kind of look at what would happen if we increased our transfer from the general fund to the PI to kind of build up a balance in there. And when I say PI, right now, I'm talking PI fund, which is the 003 fund. If we wanted to implement, there are different funds that we can use. It doesn't have to be in that fund. This is kind of all-inclusive of that. So, you know, we had a year this year where we're $1.2 million ahead of where we thought we would be. So if we wanted to increase that transfer, this would be a good year to do it. So the way I have this set up is so that we can look, it would pull it out of the general fund, put it into the PI, and then we can see where that balance is. We came into this year with a $2.3 million balance in the PI fund. The FIP, the Facilities Improvement Plan, that's what, eyes improvement, correct? Facilities Improvement Plan. The FIP, the Facilities Improvement Plan, that's what it, eyes improvement, correct? Facilities Improvement Plan is, is prepared. And the way he has those years divided out, they are on a fiscal basis, but he has project years. And when he includes something in a project year, it doesn't necessarily get spent out in that year. So when we're talking cash basis here, I have to then add those expenditures to this year. So we started with a two-point-three million dollar cash balance. If you looked at the FIP for this year, it says we're going to spend one point nine million. We're really going to spend a little bit more than that. And that's because we're spending the cash from projects that were allocated out of last year's PI budget.
I'll just jump in a little bit there. So when, when she says he, she's talking about Chris Wifter. And our Director of Operations. And we also have a Board Capital Planning Committee that works with the administration on developing a facility improvement plan. And one of the things that really came out of that work in the last two years is that on a steady basis, we need to have about a two million dollar budget for just year-over-year capital projects that need to happen. These aren't any new projects. It's not any, anything new. It's replacing air conditioning, replacing roofs and pavement and that type of thing, just the general maintenance that we do. So I, I can tell you, my perspective is that I hold very sacred that two million dollar amount because we've done so much work in that committee to substantiate that that is the amount that we need to have. And understanding that one year it might be less, but then the following year, there's going to be a bigger project, like, you know, replacing all of the HVAC in the district. So and then I guess we can talk about the fact that there is, you know, a little bit more of a cash balance coming in, which actually I assume is partially due to some of the bond proceeds from the intermediate school and maybe some savings there. Do you know, why?
I don't believe so. That would be in the, that's a separate fund. This is, you know, we had, we didn't have quite the expenditures last year. They were encumbered and the projects were started. They just weren't spent out.
Okay. So those projects are still there. They're still needed to be done. So I, you know, again, I don't want to taint. I think we as a committee need to talk about this, but my perspective would be to leave that and let Chris Wifter have those funds to do the projects that we know are needed in the district and try to keep the bus garage as like a separate, separate entity, or leave that as like a last resort that we would go to if we needed to.
These expenditures are built in here. Th- these expenditures here actually coincide to the FIP. And this does take into consideration the three hundred and forty thousand dollars that we committed, that we moved, projects that we postponed as part of our cost reduction plan when we were looking at levy scenarios. So those were all things that we knew at that time, we're just being kicked, you know, we're just kind of kicking the can down the road on those. They still need to be done. So these numbers right here actually come straight from the FIP. So this is what's left over after those expenditures are made. So we wanted to-
So you're still saying there's, there's some extra money in there. And that could be, you know, and I think we should consider it. And I think there are also probably some projects that Chris would fight to say, you know, leave that in there because I have some things coming down the road as well. Okay, so go ahead.
So if we wanted to start talking about moving some of our funding and the excess and the general, now that we know we can still get out to here, you know, when we're talking levy, we're looking at, you know, when we get to about twelve million, that's when we, we, we need to go out to a levy. We've kind of made that determination. And the reason behind that, if you don't really understand how long it takes for something to happen, you think twelve million dollars in the bank, you know, why would you need to pass levy? Reason behind that is when we pass a levy, it takes us a year and a half before we actually start collecting on that levy. It goes into the following year. The first year we'll get half of that collection and then in the next fiscal year, we'll get a full year's collection on it. So it takes us a while before we actually start collecting on that levy. So we can't wait until we're, you know, really far down the road and then trying to turn the ship. It doesn't work. We have to, we have to see it, see that path ahead and start planning before we get to that point. Because if it gets to that point, we're cutting programming immediately. Because even if we pass that levy, we still have to cut programming because we don't have the money in the bank until we start collecting on it. So that's why I say, you know, typically, we want this cash balance to be, you know, up, up around the twelve million dollar. When we get down to that range, we want to start talking passing levy. So without an additional transfer, you know, we're, we're looking pretty good in stretching that levy to where we said we would and beyond. If we want to start talking, moving more money out of the general fund into a PI fund for the bus garage, now's when we need to start talking about it and, and deciding how much we think we can afford out of that general fund. So if we, and I am just throwing numbers up here.
Yep. While you do that, I just wanted to add a comment. And we're going to talk a little bit about the ways that we can do this. But, and I know I, I have a strong preference for a certain way to do it. So we'll, we need to talk that through as a committee and as a board. One of the disadvantages to the, the PI fund that we have right now is that when you transfer funds into it, you can't transfer back into the general fund. So it's a permanent transfer. There is another fund that we have not used, but we have explored with one of our attorneys that's an O-seven-O fund. It's also for capital improvement projects. They have to be defined, but they can be defined fairly broadly. That is a two-way street. And so it has some advantages of us being able to set money aside, taking it off of our bottom line. And yet, if there were a catastrophic event, like a levy failure, we could put those monies back into the general fund if we needed to. So I think that would be naturally a question that might come up is how aggressive would we want to be in moving these funds? So if we choose to do the fund, we can reverse it. You might have a different opinion versus one where it's a permanent transfer.
Yeah, so purposes of this discussion, this is just, it, it doesn't necessarily have to be the PI fund.
Right, it doesn't, right, it doesn't necessarily matter. It's just being set aside, right?
Construction funds. I should label it that way. So we want to have two million to, to do the bus garage. Potentially more, you know, we, we don't really know. The board wants to, I think, set the budget and have that determine the design rather than the design determine the budget. So we need to manipulate these numbers to get this to where we want it to be. So if anyone has suggestions on how much you think we can afford and where you want this number to be, obviously, this is, it, it, it's a board final decision, but we're looking for input on, you know, where people feel comfortable.
Would you, Ashley, would you add a summation in column H, just on those additional transfers? So we could just see if it just came out of the general fund, thank you. We can see where we're at. So why don't we start with the most aggressive? We'll assume that the bus garage is either two and a half or three million dollars, which is very possible with the last, you know, designs that we had. What, Sharon?
That's, it's, that's just, it, it was originally eight hundred thousand dollars and then it jumped to one point two. I understand, but no, like we, we're not now going to start talking about it with three million dollars. That's just too high. If, if we have that financial flexibility, it's going to end up in, in the design. And I, you know, these are still funds that need to be protected. There's a lot of uses. You know, we, a district with limited funds, our funds are always going to be at a premium. And I, I would not support going that high as for the planning phase.
And I'm concerned, like, I don't, you just said it started with eight hundred some thousand? I don't remember that.
When we were back in the Master Facilities Planning Committee, the only reason we ever even talked about it coming out of the operating fund three years ago was because it was a number below a million that we thought, you know, we could chip away at this and take a little bit out of operating over a few years and get to eight hundred thousand. And then they came to a board meeting and it was one point two. And then two weeks later, it was one point five. And that's when we started saying, well, then we're not, the strategy was only if we could chip it out of operating. And now we know we can't do that. So it got postponed.
Yeah, but I mean, the, the years have gone on. And that was a lot of years ago and costs have gone up tremendously. And I know, like, a conversation I had with Gil Bain, who, who isn't, who gave us some estimates, you know, while they were still doing the intermediate project, and I was told, you won't be happy, you won't be happy with the two million dollar.
The people in our, the, the volunteers in our capital planning committee, the local building experts, told us that two million dollars was a reasonable number to work with. But that was at the most meeting.
So I also, and I also want to be careful with giving a perception that, you know, costs were just escalating willy-nilly. I, I think that as master planning proceeded and more details were derived about what the needs are, the architects were certainly looking at designing, you know, more fleshed-out building. I think this conversation is going to happen at the board level. And we don't have everybody here tonight. So let's save the, what makes sense and keeping in mind being fiscally responsible with the district. Because obviously, just because we can afford a three million dollar bus garage, doesn't mean we should. So let's save that conversation for the board. But I do think it is helpful information to know what, let's say the architect says it's a three million dollar project, we should know what that's going to mean to our forecast. And so I'd like to start there, but then I also want to shave it down, you know, between three and like-
And I'm going to push back on you. We just had a capital planning meeting where we were told it did not need to be that high of a number. And I'm going to disagree. Now, if we had started this conversation with, there's additional things on the FIP that we feel really passionate, need to happen sooner rather than later. And so we need that number to be bigger, but that's not where we are. And I, I don't think it is a good idea to plan for the highest number that we think we could need to get the garage that we want.
And that's what I'm saying.
Sorry. Are we talking about where? Sorry, go ahead.
Yeah, I didn't hear your question. Sorry.
Oh, I was going to say, are we talking about how much we are willing to spend on this? Or are we trying to, as, as our group, are we trying to figure out sort of where we would pull it from or how we would like to allocate the resources? Because if we're talking about where we're, you know, which accounts these things are coming out of, I would, unless the, unless the attorney you're talking to makes a really strong case for locking funds into that different type of account that has more flexibility, I would be, I would be, I would recommend against doing anything that would lock the funds up or make it so that they could only be used for a project like this. Because to Sharon's point, you know, I think it is, it is important, especially when you're, I, I mean, I'm just speaking human nature. When your pockets are full, especially unexpectedly, it's easy to not shy away from a higher quote. And so I think we do need to be cautious in knowing that we have this, knowing that we have surplus bringing, if that makes sense, to keep a check on, to keep a check on it. Not saying that we won't ultimately decide, or you won't ultimately decide that it's worth the extra amount. But I do think that from a, just from a, from a consumer perspective or from a community perspective, the idea that we would put all the surplus in the bus garage or transportation thing doesn't really like click as far as selling. And I, of course, know that capital improvements are important, but it doesn't, it doesn't have the same kind of emotional heft as say, we are going to add a program or we're going to, you know, make the, this teacher full-time so that they can reach more classes or something like that. So I think it's not to say that the, the logistics aren't important, but just the idea that we may not want to spend all of our surplus here. So I just recommend keeping it in, keeping it in a more versatile account at this point. So if that's what we're discussing allocation, I would say maybe go with what our original plan was for allocation and move that original amount over. But keep the other in reserve in case we do need to dip into. I mean, I don't think it would prevent us from dipping into it, correct?
No, and I want to, you touched several things there. So one-
Can I just, Catherine, let me just say one more thing. I'm not saying that, I'm not saying what I think we should spend on the bus garage based on my personal opinion. I am saying, I think today's, today's meeting, financially, we should plan to the number that our capital planning experts suggested would be appropriate for that project. And if at some point we get further down the line and we realize that was too low, then we can have that conversation then. But I don't think we need to add whatever it is, thirty percent to the number those experts gave us just to be sure that we can facilitate this happening in 2024.
And it also could be lower. I mean, we may be looking at options to do, you know, prefab. And I just think we don't know, there's a range that we still need to evaluate what it's going to be. So Emily, we are looking at what we can afford as well as where it's going to come from. Sorry.
Catherine, just, just real quick. Remember, a part, a large part of this escalation was we went from a transportation center that was for busing only to a transportation center that also housed maintenance. It's a huge delta in the number that, you know, depending on where we land with allocation, can either be put in or put out.
I think that's really important to keep in mind because you are talking about a different animal. And I guess, Bob, my question for you would be whether or not that maintenance hub was also on the top list. Does that make sense? Like, was that also a priority for the district? Or was that something that's like a nice to have, that's easy to add on here and is going to save us money in the long run?
No, I mean, it was a needed issue, increased, improved efficiency. We don't have the facilities now, the protected equipment. So I, I would say it's not a nice to have. But, you know, at the end of the day, if it's the difference between, you know, one point eight or two and three million, that's, that's, you know, comes down to tough choices.
Right, I kind of think to that point, it would be a question of like-
I just wanted to, now you say a couple of things real quick. So the district, we're going to be re-entering a strategic planning phase this fall. And so what you're bringing up is, is really relevant, that there are a lot of things, a lot of things we can do with funds in the district. And we need to make sure that we're putting them toward our highest priority. So I can tell you from a facilities perspective, this is the top project in master planning that needs to happen soon. You know, we, we've already put it off for a while. So when it comes to our facilities, this is the next big project outside of just regular maintenance that we need to do at some point, you know, I would say in the next five years. When it comes to-
And you're talking about just the bus part, right?
No, the whole, the whole, right, the whole idea, I think it's, it's, you know, and that's something that we'll go into maybe a little bit more in the board meeting. It gets a little bit beyond this committee because it is really understanding the efficiencies that can be achieved with the design. And there, there, we may have to make some trade-offs that, you know, we're not going to be able to afford all of those efficiencies, like, you know, Bob alluded to. If we decide we can only-
I don't, I feel like that's deceiving because the, the highest priority was the bus garage as a bus garage. And then other things that were generated in the master planning were, wow, it would make more spent, sense. There would be efficiencies in having this mechanical area altogether. And it would free up space on the campus, which is at a premium. So there were ancillary reasons to support the addition of that. I don't disagree with that. At the same time, I think it's out of the scope of the conversation for tonight, which is why I'm pushing on keeping the number low. Because also at the top of that priority list was- Because also at the top of that priority list was to start doing a wing a time at the high school at a million dollars a wing and to start updating the high school. So it's a bigger capital planning conversation. That extra hundred thousand, that extra million dollars, the delta between the two and the $3 million is in extensive conversation on how the board thinks that money should be spent. So I am more comfortable tonight in conversation for the context of the bus garage, keeping it to the $2 million number.
And I would think that Sharon, I think I agree with the idea of keeping, if we're making any transfers or if that's what we're discussing, I think we should stay the course on what is currently the number in front of us. Knowing, of course, Catherine, that if, if the choice is to take advantage of those efficiencies and build both of those into the plan as a high priority, that the money will be there and could be tapped into, but it's not earmarked. You know, this is for the bus garage slash maintenance facility, which, I mean, I, again, back to human nature, we're almost guaranteed that it would all be spent that way. So I would say, keep it in your pocket. And that, that's my, my advice for what it's worth at this committee.
There's two ways we could, sorry, Ashley, were you trying to talk?
I was just going to try to get us on, on track to what we need to do tonight. Because it is five till seven. I, I think, you know, the conversation about which, which fund it is and all of that, I think that's definitely a, a later conversation. Because right now, I mean, this, I can label it whatever we want. We're just, we're just setting it aside. And setting it aside does not mean it can't go back at this point, even if it was just PI, because we're transferring one, almost, you know, over a million dollars into there every single year out of the general fund. So if we want to stop that at any point, we do that. So that's essentially putting it back. So I, I don't think that whether or not, or what, you know, the feeling of setting it aside versus keeping it in the general fund at this point really i- is what we're talking about. I think we want to talk about what can we afford? What are we comfortable with pulling out of here and setting it aside? What are we comfortable with? It's not tying us to it for the rest of our lives because, as I said, if we get to, to here in 23 or 24 and we, you know, we need this 1.8 million dollars back, I'm transferring over a million in each of these years. I just don't transfer it. And it stays in the general. So it's there. Or if it's in the 70, we just transfer it back. Doesn't matter. I think we really just need to talk about what are we comfortable with at this point? What do we think we, we can do? Because it does affect the levy cycle. When we're talking levy, you know, we're really talking general fund. And where this balance is.
So I'd like to see, let's start then with the 2 million. And
You want to see what it takes to get there?
I'm looking at, I'm looking at column H. I'm looking at if you leave.
Oh, you don't want to utilize what's remaining in the?
I don't really like the idea of using the money that's in the, and not right off the bat. I want to see what would happen if we didn't. Because, and also to, to everyone's point here, there are other projects that this may help the board to identify that, oh, we can do one of those high school projects within this levy cycle. So we're really just trying to get a sense of, again, it's a huge assumption that this would all go toward capital projects because there may be other projects that are identified in strategic planning. They're going to be a higher priority. But just for, you know, my purposes, would you put in? Yeah, you already did. All right. So that gets us, we're still, we're still above 12, $12 million. For, so we're still comfortably within a four-year levy cycle.
When, when are we going on the, is, is that, we're going on the ballot?
It, that assumes we would go in 24, which is four years from 2020. And we promised three years.
And this is an additional 2 million to the 1 million.
Accomplishment that I think that there are so many people who have collaborated and worked hard internal to the district and external to the district to facilitate an outcome where we will be, we would be asking in, we would be pushing the levy cycle to four years and having gone eight years without asking people to pay additional tax dollars to the Chagrin schools. I think that is you know, something that we should also strive to protect because there's a lot of hard work that has gone into that accomplishment alone. So this I'm comfortable with as long as it gets, keeps the four-year cycle. Well, pushes us to a four-year cycle. I understand we committed to a three-year cycle.
Keep in mind, this also does not bring back any of the cuts that we made this past year. This is, those are gone forever. Or at least for the next five years.
This is additional, this is additional into, like, we're still, we're not counting that, the 1 million that's already rolling in, right? Is that right, Ashley?
This would be pulling 2 million straight out of the general over the next four years. So this balance here in the PI
You already are doing.
This, the way this is set up is when I'm adding this 2 million here, it's adding it to here. So this balance would still be the 1.3 if we were pulling the two into another fund. We'd still have the 1.3 that we thought we were going to have without the additional transfers.
And we're, I think you said that we're still also rolling about a million every year also, right? That's in addition to that?
Oh, yeah. And the transfers that are coming in right now. So the transfers right now that are going to PI, this is what we're estimating based on the, that has been calculated. I can show you all my formulas over here, but I, I think we're short on time. What this does is takes the millage into consideration. This, these look a little bit different than they did in November because the property values came in. And the tax number that's going to roll into there from the inside millage that we moved to the PI fund is a little bit different. So this is getting us to $2 million funding in that fund each year. Minus the 340 for this year, because we said we didn't want to put the 340. That was part of our, our plan. And then moving that 340 into 24 and 25, assuming that those projects that we're kicking down the road, we still have to do. So in those years, it's going to fund it a little higher. That's why it kicks up a little bit here from this 23.
So my, my takeaway is we respect the value of retaining the option to have those funds for other purposes. And we would not want to move the funds permanently into, you know, a bucket that would reduce our flexibility in the future. And remember too, Emily, even with that, we update this forecast twice a year. We can make these changes as regularly as we need to and adjust to circumstances.
I'm going to ask the board to commit to right, not right at this moment, but that in this year is this number. This is the one we're going to be tied into. This year ends June 30th. I'm going to have to make that transfer in June. These can always be changed. And this, if we decide we didn't want it, then in the next year, instead of transferring 1.2, I would only transfer 700 if we changed our mind. That makes sense. It makes total sense in my head, but sometimes when I try to
I think that makes sense and I think that's a reasonable approach.
And then the other takeaway is we could, we could afford 2 million, but we definitely need to weigh the use of those funds for this project against other projects that have been identified in the FIP as well as that could be identified in strategic planning.
And not just projects, as Emily said before, it could be programming.
Yeah.
Or whatever.
Yeah, it could be
I suppose for what it's worth, I don't know. Oh, sorry. I don't know if anybody, I don't know if any of the other community members have thought about it, but I suppose I would advocate for 300,000 or something slightly less than the 500, knowing that we could always increase or do additional transfers later. That's just where I'm thinking, just sort of to give ourselves the feeling of artificial scarcity on this so that we go in with a clear head to capital planning.
What if we just replenish the 340 that we pulled out of there this year?
That makes sense completely to me.
That funds of the 2 million, it doesn't change what we committed to the community. I mean, we committed to the community that we would reduce our spending by that 340. We certainly did that way more than that. If I increased spending by 340, you know, we're still in an ending balance that's higher than what we anticipated in November. Certainly made good on our promises to the community.
And see, for me, that's all resolved with the 070 fund because we can set the money aside in a planful way, but we could always call it back into the general fund at any time. So you, we don't need to be conservative. We can be intentional about setting aside the money that we, we decide we need, knowing that there are options, you know, to pull the money back into the general fund. I, I kind of feel like if it's sitting in the general fund, it's likely to get spent on other things. And will be called out, for example, by community members and union members and saying, well, look at your cash balance. So there's some value to saying, we really need to spend this money and it needs to be spent on this project. So that's, I, I, I don't want to sound like
That's an important part, point that Catherine just made, which is as much as the cash balance provides us assurance that we won't have to make programming cuts because of a failed levy, people perceive that as we are significant, we have significantly more revenues at our disposal than we actually do. And so there is a benefit to keeping that close to our goal of where we feel it protects the district, but not not having it go false, not having it have the appearance of being falsely high as well. So I, I and, and, and because we can adjust future years and we're talking about it coming in and out of the operating fund, I'm comfortable with the number that was in there, the 500. You know, all of this is going to be talked at at the, at the board level as well. But, and I, but I think the, and I think the board needs a presentation on the 0700 fund because I think we should just wrestle for once and for all with, is that something we're willing to utilize or not?
I think from an accounting perspective, I mean, for, for my purposes, I know Catherine feels strongly that she wants the 070. To me, if it's PI or 070, it makes no difference when we're talking this much money. If we were talking tens of millions, it would really matter. Right now, as long as this amount remains less than 1.2 million dollars, it doesn't matter. I can set it aside in a special cost center in the PI fund. If we want to have that 070 for going forward to start trying to put things away for a larger project, then it would really matter. And if the board is more comfortable with that, all we have to do is ask the state auditor if we can create fund. They say yes, and we create it.
Ashley, what is, what, what is your leaning towards creating a special cost center to earmark these funds over the 0700?
I just, it, it doesn't, it makes zero difference to me. I think that my, my concern with the 070 is that we have to, and I know you've, you've, you have been told in previous presentations that you can be very broad with the projects. I've been told otherwise. So if we put it in there and we said it was for a bus garage, we couldn't use it for anything else. We'd have to, that's the only thing we can use it on. Now, then we would just transfer it back to the general, then move it out of the general back into either the 070 with new legis, or a new resolution, or move it into the PI. It's just a lot of paperwork to me. Really, when we're talking this small of a dollar amount, I'm, I'm fine with either direction.
Yeah, I mean, you're right. As long as it's less than the next year's transfer, it's not as critical. So I appreciate that. That is a really good point. So let's, you know, let's go ahead and, you know, look at it. I think we should have at least a brief discussion at the board level about it, but that you may have convinced me that for this project, that's maybe not the right tool. We could save that instrument for another project that, you know, exceeds what our transfer would normally be to the, to the PI.
I mean, if we start talking about one of those wings now, right? And those, those are each million dollar projects and we're going to start stacking and saving different amounts each year towards
Right. It could be more than the million pretty quickly if we
Yeah, then I can be aware of that.
Also, if we get to a point, you know, I know we've talked very briefly before about having more millage actually going into the PI so that it's, it sits there. Then that transfer, the need for that transfer out of the general is going to be minimized or eliminated. Then you start getting to a conversation about, well, I can't move it back, you know, once it's there, it's there. Then that's where that flexibility becomes more important. I mean, right now, pretty much we're funding things from the general fund.
Right now and always historically, that's how we've done it until we finally transferred some inside mills over to that fund, which I think is reminding me
Which is still pulling from the general fund essentially because the millage was going into the general fund.
So one of the things I think Ashley is kind of also putting on our radar is that when we do go out for a levy in 24, we may be looking at doing a PI levy with an operating so that we are putting more tax voted dollars into that fund separate from. And that's something, you know, we'll look at. We always, we always look at that as a board, as, as a possibility. And there's pros and cons. One is whether it's two issues on the ballot or one, and, you know, obviously it adds more millage to the tax bill. So there's lots of things to talk through there. But I think that for this work tonight, and I feel like there are several committee members that haven't had a chance to talk. So why don't we just give an opportunity for anybody else who has questions or comments?
Well, I, I have a comment. It, it's like, it's like, we're talking about a surplus, you know, this, the million plus from this year. You know, when we did the levy, it's like there was, like, what, I think it was with the 600,000 of, of cuts. People are saying, well, if you've got a windfall or, you know, you, why, why don't we reinstate some of those cuts? You know, so I think the, the optics of, and I'm not saying that exactly right, but people would rather see that go back into whatever programming we may have lost rather than the bus garage.
So, and I don't want to misrepresent that the bus garage has been on the list of projects that need to be done for a long, long time. So it's not like we started
And I know that, I'm just talking about the optics.
Yeah, I, I totally get it. The optics could be, but it's more that if that hadn't happened, if Ashley hadn't told us tonight that we, you know, had a really good year, we would still be having this conversation about how are we going to find a couple million dollars to do the bus garage?
I've, I've been hearing about the bus garage since, I think, before I got on the committee. So I know it needs to get done. And I, and I, it just, it's one of those, it's like a thorn in the side of this budget.
It's not fun. It's not something that people are going to get excited about. You know, it's not a new intermediate school. It's this beautiful shiny building. It's just, it, it has to be done, but it's other things are always going to look better and be more exciting and
We gotta, we gotta like get some sponsorship, like the Ganley Bus Garage.
Oh my God, that's a great idea.
That'd be awesome.
Bob, the other thing I was going to say is the administration worked really hard with the board when we figured out what those cuts were. We really set a bar of let's do what we have to do to meet this goal without impacting student programming to the best of our ability. So it's not as though there are programming opportunities for students that got shelved that we're not bringing back.
And I'm comfortable with it. I'm just saying, I've looked at enough of these community bulletin boards that the optics are important. And people, if somebody latches onto it, it's something we need to be in front of and understanding of.
Yeah. And just for the committee, just for the committee to know as well, after we made those reductions, we did, we were able to absorb some more through attrition. We had some late resignations. So I, I think, you know, to Sharon's point, the impact on students really was avoided completely. And there was, there was more savings achieved through attrition. So I think this committee should be aware of that as we enter into that conversation. So I think this committee should be aware of that as we enter into that conversation.
So I think we, you know, lead with that stuff so people don't get wound up about it, if it ever comes up.
Yeah, and a lot of the savings too, you know, because I, I tend to worry when we have a good year, I tend to worry that people next year are going to say, well, why do you need 1.2 million dollars for supplies when last year you only spent 900? You know, a lot of that is due to just teaching remotely in the beginning. You know, we had more students who were, you use less in the classroom. You're, you're taking fewer trips. You know, you're not paying the bus drivers for some of the, all those trips that they would have taken for field trips. And, you know, there's fewer athletic trips. And all of that stuff played into that. And it's, it's not something that is always going to be the case.
Yeah, it was a one-year. We hope, we hope we're done with that and back, back to normal. But then also, that also, the board will still be always, and the administration always looking for cost efficiencies. And we will continue to do that because we need to keep our cost to educate per pupil as low as possible and provide the quality education, but always be looking for cost savings. So we, we will certainly be looking for additional savings as we move into these next few years in the cycle as well.
Yeah. And, you know, we talk about the, or at least I talk about the federal funds that we received that affected this and reduced our expenditures. But, but our staff and our administration goes out for funding everywhere, not just, you know, the federal funding. And all of those things are planned purchases. They're things that the people were going to do and thought they were going to do out of the general fund. And then they, they find other funding and, and, you know, really put effort toward alleviating the pressure on the general fund. So that, all of that plays into it and all of that helps. It's just you can't always count on it. Because if I come to you and say, you know, we're only going to spend 30 million and then at the end of the year we spent 32, you're not going to be quite as happy with me as you are right now.
So anybody else on the phone who hasn't gotten a chance to ask any questions? I think Phil and Jim, I'll make sure we make room for you to chime in if you have any comments or questions.
I'm pretty good. You guys discussed it pretty well. I've been listening the whole time. So technically, I'm not a member of the committee, so I'm trying not to say too much.
Okay, great. Well, and Jim, are you good? Probably scoring a goal out there or something. All right, well, then I think we're ready to bring this to the board, Ashley, with your forecast update. I did have one other question that's not related to the facilities. When we start to get into strategic planning, you know, we have a newer initiative with the diversity, equity, inclusion, and justice work that's done. And there will be some expenditures that will be needed. I don't think they're going to be huge. But how, how are you handling that in the forecast? Is there anything in there anticipating that work yet? And if not, is that something you could pull together for us for?
You know, I don't, I don't know where there would really be additional expenditures unless we hired staff to manage that.
So in the action plans, there are, and again, we're not talking big numbers, but there are some things. I think Bob can work with you and kind of just show you. Again, they're, they're minor, but I was just curious. I feel like, I don't know if it would be a new line item or anything like that, or if it would just be incorporated into consultant work or, you know, there might be some surveys that we're going to be conducting that might add a little bit of, of an expense. Again, it's, it's really minor, but that group is a little ahead of, ahead of the rest of the strategic planning process where some of those things have already started to be identified. So understanding, that group may feel very reassured to see how that then gets into the budget so that they know the work that's been identified that's needed. You know, we are planning for that. We're, we're setting aside funds for those as well.
Yeah, I'll, I'll take a look at what the steps actually are and see if there's anything that really is, you know, going to have a large impact. Something like, you know, if you're going to hire consultants, you know, to help, I can create a separate line for that if we want to just maintain it separately, just so that it's easy to call out the number. I mean, that, that's, that's an easy thing to do in the system. It used to be in my old system. My new system, it will be easy in a couple of weeks when I learn it.
Okay, well, that was the only last comment that I had. Does anybody else have anything? Otherwise, I think we'll adjourn. All right, thank you. Ashley will send up those follow-up, send out the follow-up materials. And, I'm sorry, Jim, did you have something?
No, I was just going to thank everybody and, and just, Ashley, I wasn't sure if you were going to send everybody the materials, but if not, if you were just sending it to people who had requested, I'd like to see them as well if possible.
Yeah, I can send the, the spreadsheets out.
And then.
Okay, thank you.
It's going to look a little different because I am going to work in the $500,000 additional transfer. So that's going to change the bottom line. But I'll, I'll certainly send it out.
And this will be at the next board meeting, is that correct, Ashley? So June 2nd?
May 19th.
I'm sorry, this is next week. I'm already thinking that, right, May 19th at 6 o'clock. So you guys can watch it on, on YouTube if you want, or at any time after the meeting, those are available to view.
And then John, if you wanted to get together at some point to kind of just get more of a history or get, you know, a deeper understanding of anything, just give me a call or shoot me an email, we'll set something up.
That would be great. I would love that.
All right, thanks, everybody. The meeting is adjourned.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Take care.